Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, or Ms. President.
Thank you. And those viewing the broadcast tonight, we're experiencing technical difficulties with tonight's Channel 18 live broadcast of the city council meeting. Audio broadcast is only available. We apologize for the inconvenience. However, we are video recording the session from the city council chambers and will have it available on the city council's YouTube channel tomorrow and will re-air during the week. And with that, Alderman Seener, you had someone you wanted to introduce?
I guess my mic's not working.
Here, tell me, I'll tell him.
No, it is.
Well, we got to, we have a visitor from the Decatur City Council, Mr. Pat McDaniel. If you'd like to stand and please be recognized, sir.
At this time, I'd like to call on Doug Brown from the Public Utilities, Chief Utility Engineer, to give a presentation on the financials.
Thank you, Mayor. So for our second quarterly reports. So at the end of August, our cash position is, for Electric Division, is $23.1 million, which is 42 days of cash on hand, which we're required to have 60. It's definitely been a big improvement. If the state was actually current with their bills, we'd actually have $27.2 million, which would be 49 days of cash on hand. So there are basically approximately still $5.5 million behind. They've been paying, but they've already been basically in keeping, making monthly payments. The bonds have been issued by the state, so we are expecting that in the near future they will be starting to pay more down on their balance. The Electric Fund cash position, as you can see, it's been steadily increasing since basically since last summer, when the state started paying. That really started uptick, basically, in our cash position as well. And it's carried through to where we're at our highest point that we've been in quite So our revenues, though, they've actually been slightly been down for the retail and as well as wholesale sales. Really, it's, you know, when you start looking at retail sales, the summer just hasn't been as hot as we might, would like. So sales have been down. Wholesale sales, we did have a pretty good spring with wholesale sales into the early summer, and then it kind of tapered off more in the later summer months. So you can see revenues here are slightly down from a year ago. So we've, at least through the summer months, you can see that comparison. And it's also below our projections that we had for this year, what was budgeted. Expenses, variance, we are controlling expenses. We're $21 million under budget right now with our expenses to date through August. And here you can see the comparison between the fiscals from last year to this year, as well as, you know, where we're at with, and with this year's budget. The debt coverage ratio, we're at 2.51 without the pilot. And if you include the pilot, that drops us to 2.28, and that's what the rating agencies actually look at. That's why we provide both numbers. But as far as what our bonds really require is the higher number, the 2.51, which we're doing well. Just a snapshot of the pilot as far as in the past fiscal years compared to where we're at now. You can see that we've been increasing. Here, this is basically our debt service for the Electric Fund. That's pretty much the standards. You know, nothing's really changed since the last presentation. We still are being reviewed by Moody's, and probably within the next couple of weeks, they'll provide something, probably as far as what their determination is from that. They followed up with some last-minute questions that we hadn't provided, or we still haven't had time to actually answer them yet, so they'll, won't be getting that soon. For the Water Fund, it's $6.1 million of working cash on hand, so it's 91 days. And here you can see the 60 days of cash requirement's $4 million. And that's the, basically, the cash position for the Water Fund has been slowly declining as far as the cash position. Water Fund revenues and expenses. Again, water revenues are slightly down, but the Water Department, we're making up for that and with controlling our expenses. And here you can see the revenue comparison that, you know, when it was warmer this year in June, July, we actually had more revenues this year than we did the previous year. And then in August, the cooler weather hit, and our water revenues declined. Here, just in comparison of expenses, where most of the expenses were this year, were under last year's expenses up until August. Debt coverage, though, for the Water Fund is 2.23 without the auxiliary services. And if you include the auxiliary services, it's actually a 2.0. The Water Fund debt. Labor, we've been under budget for our Water Fund and the Electric Fund for labor costs. And this is what our expected pilot is right now. Any questions?
Alderman McMenamin?
Doug, this is a really outstanding report with showing continued strength in our, particularly, in our Electric Funds, strength beyond what we've had for many years. Could you add an additional slide for the future that would show the amount of monies we're capturing from the coal savings that we, the mayor and our city attorney negotiated about a year and a half ago? We, the city council, at the partial urging of utility management, requested that we capture some of those coal savings instead of redistributing in the fuel adjustment clause to our rate payers. And the purpose of accumulating that money is to create an environmental compliance fund. And so the request is to have a slide that shows the continued growth of that environmental compliance from month, or from quarterly report to quarterly report.
Yes, Alderman, I can definitely include that number. And basically, the total in that account right now is $12.9 million.
$12.9 million.
Through, and through August for this year, we've collected $3.8. Because around, if you remember, the, some of the, roughly $9 million, I think, from the wind contract renegotiations was deposited into that account.
Okay, that's right. Any other questions? One I have is on the expenses, especially on the Electric side. It's down, I think, $20 million, you said, $21 million, somewhere around that. What's the savings? Is that postponed maintenance, or staffing, or what's the savings for the variance?
That's the difference between the budget to date and the expenses to date.
I understand that, but what's, what aren't we spending it on that we budgeted for?
There were probably many line items across the board, as far as boiler repairs, plant repairs, T&amp;D expenses that are budgeted as well.
And then, uh...
I don't have any more detail on that right now, though.
Oh, we'll get that. And then, the goal for CWP is 60 days of cash?
Yes.
And that was projected when we renegotiated the bonds? Do you remember what year that was supposed to be?
We kind of targeted a five-year plan for that, so we're definitely ahead of schedule as far as that goes.
So we have 42 days right now?
Correct.
We currently have 91 days, right?
Well, that was for Water Fund. For Electric Fund, that's 42.
Yeah. And so when we went to the rating agencies, that's one thing that they asked us about when we'd be able, the goal was to build up 60 days of cash on the Electric side.
Yes.
So we're ahead of schedule, and hopefully we'll make that soon. Alderman Donald?
Thank you, Mayor. As a follow-up to the mayor's question, what was it before we made the changes a couple of years ago? Can you remember if it was 10 days, 5 days?
I think at one point, what I can remember, we had 3 days of cash on hand.
That's significant.
Significant, yes.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the October 17th, 2017 city council meeting and approve the minutes.
Come on.
It's moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of the city council meeting.
It's moved.
It's moved, second.
It's moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council rating of the consent agenda into the record of the city council meeting.
It's moved.
Second.
It's moved in second. Any discussion?
Discussion. On the 2017-4-0, is there any breakdown of those individuals afterwards? Consent, is it denied? Is there a reason why they were denied?
That's the psychological services evaluation.
Those are police and fire entry, psychological exams that they get, so that would be any candidate that made it to that stage. Not all of them will get through. As far as the reason for their denial, that's just based on the psychologist's recommendation.
Is there any way we can get, the number goes up or we not include that?
As I, 271 individuals over the last 10 years have gone. I can give you the number that didn't make it through the process.
Can we, can we also have that broken down by gender and race, please?
I'll see what I can do for you, sure.
Thank you.
And that's one of the things we're working towards is, especially with police and fire, to improve diversity numbers or making sure that people aren't falling through the cracks is at each level of the testing, who's qualifying, and then where the fallout is as we progress. So is it the obstacle course, written test, or the psychological test? So we have better tracking those numbers. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to move the agenda number 2017-485 to the debate agenda for purposes of an amendment.
It's moved.
Second.
It's moved in second. Any discussion?
What does that ordinance pertain to, Mr. Holman?
I believe it is the PGAV. That's the Madison Park TIF extension, and that's an amendment with regards to Operation Johnson.
Essentially, the amendment is a technical amendment to take the funds out of the Madison TIF instead of the corporate fund. The original ordinance had corporate fund, but that is an eligible expenditure, and there's sufficient money in the Madison TIF, and both OBM and OPED recommended the change.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. With the exception of agenda number 2017-485, the chair will entertain a motion to place the ordinances on the consent agenda on final passage.
Second.
It's moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2017-474, an ordinance accepting the lowest bid and authorizing execution of contract PD 18-06-29 with Cored Builders, Inc., for construction of the police department's new K-9 facility located at 3501 Keller Plant Road for an amount not to exceed $460,000, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $60,000 for the Springfield Police Department. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2017-474 on final passage.
It's moved.
Second.
It's moved in second. Any discussion?
Can we not have a demonstration?
Yeah, I'd ask the chief to come up, or someone from the K-9 unit as well, to explain the need and how that would benefit the area.
Oh, the chief is going to be the demo?
Not national demo, no. First and foremost, I want to thank you guys for taking the time to consider this proposal. This is a project that's been two years in the making and one that's desperately needed. As the pictures here are former facilities, they're down. This is what our new construction, I emailed those years earlier, just to take the chance to see them and pass them around. When we started out on this project two and a half years ago, the idea was to design a facility that would meet our current needs plus allow for future growth. What we have in front of you is not the Taj Mahal, but it's a building that will meet our needs and do just that. We decided when we started this that we would go with a rectangular-shaped building on a slab, wood frame, wood framing, economical metal and roofing, and siding, low maintenance on the inside and outside, but also looking for something that would last, you know, for several decades to meet our needs. With that done, the men and women of this department and this unit have given their time, sweat, equity to try and improve the unit, as well as helping try to reduce these costs to make this possible and feasible. We've worked with the builder within the scope of the project to try to reduce these costs as great as possible. We know it's quite a bit of money, but it's something that's dearly needed. We're seen as a regional training facility. This isn't just a kennel, this is a training facility. It incorporates a classroom as well as kennels. They can be used for multiple uses, not just K-9. If we need the classroom, say, for our junior police academy or some other function, it can be utilized for that, or any other type of training that we see fit. We constantly and consistently host the regional trials for USPCA, and when they come out there, you know, we want to be proud of our facility. What you see there is not what we're proud of. That's what we worked out of my entire career, entire career. And as you can see, it wasn't healthy, it wasn't professional, and what we have here is nothing over the top, as I stated earlier. It's basic. It's probably 2,376 square feet. It's got an 18-by-27 classroom, you know, and when it came in, we were all shocked by the cost. We were shocked by the cost. We worked with Todd Hannover, our architect, to reduce these costs. We worked with our K-9 unit to say, what do we absolutely have to have? What can we cut? And this is the final product, the layout that you have today, the elevations, as well as the floor plan. This is the final product. We don't believe if we postpone building this, that costs are going to drop, or if we rebid it. In fact, from talking to our builder and talking to our architect, we believe that the cost will significantly rise because of the demand for supplies and stuff at this point in time due to all the natural disasters that are going on, plus labor costs don't go down, they typically go up. So we don't think there's any cost saving by going forward, or by delaying, or by not bid, or by rebidding. So the bottom line is that, you know, we recently trained some state agency dogs, we train our own dogs. If we had to send our dogs out or our officers out to be trained elsewhere, we're talking about approximately $15,000 per class, per officer. The cost there is something we can do in-house at a much cheaper cost, and we can generate some revenue by training other dogs as well. The bottom line is we want the best police department possible. In order to have the best police department, you have to have the best trained officers. And to have the best trained officer, we have to have the facilities to do that, as well as the supplies and equipment to do it.
Chris?
Chief, what is the estimated useful life of the new construction?
We were told several decades, well, 50 years, 40 to 50 years is what we're being told.
Thank you.
You mentioned revenue possibly being generated by this facility. Do you have a ballpark figure?
We don't, because lately, the classes we've hosted have been typically for our own dogs right now, because we haven't had a facility to host them at. But again, you know, there would be a cost. I don't know what we would charge an athlete for the cost for each participant going forward. We just know what our cost would be if we had to ship our officers to another part of the state to train.
Is all the cost in the building, or is there other expenses that are occurring from this? Is it all in the building?
Yes, all this cost is labor and construction cost, material cost.
And I see you've had some cost reductions, like water lines and stuff like that. How are we going to, if we don't put those in, how are we going to have the services to the building that we need?
I believe we are putting water lines in. The only thing we're doing with cost reductions that we didn't do was number 10. If you look at the Cored Builders sheet, look at that, sir. We worked with Public Works to do some of the site prep, to remove some of the old foundations from the old ANM control center that was out there. They were able to work with us to reduce some of those costs, as well as these other things that we've looked at on reducing costs. But we did not do number 10 on the list for reduced costs. And Todd, you want to talk a little more about that?
As far as the water lines concerned, that was just an extension of an interior water line for future addition. So we just brought that back. It was just an extra that we had...
You've got sufficient water lines in there?
Oh, yes, yep. It'll be a turkey...
Because you have dog washes and everything else in there?
Yep, correct.
Yes, sir.
Was it, it's my understanding that half the money came from last year's budget?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
This has been, like I said, a two-year project.
Right.
$20,000 current budget, $20,000 a year before.
Okay.
How many dogs do you currently have?
We have seven K-9 units.
Seven K-9 units.
Do you want to introduce them, chief? Some of them are here.
Absolutely. Ryan Nation is our K-9 coordinator. Officer Holzbein and his partner Bullet.
You can come on out.
Officer Carpenter.
We're going to buy you.
Officer Maddox. Officer Plech.
Chuck, take off running, see if it catches you.
Come on up, pet it.
I asked, I was totally good.
How old's Bullet?
How old's Bullet? Two and a half.
Two and a half. And useful K-9 is, what, about eight to 10 years?
Yes.
Chief, we have, I think, a regional logic that puts the distance to $1.
We sell the dog to the K-9 handler for $1.
I think we've had a few of those ordinances come through. And that has passed through the state legislature, I think, doesn't it?
Yeah, we had always done that practice, but the legislature passed a bill about a year and a half, two years ago that requires the option for K-9 handlers to obtain their partner. You know, these are family members for them, all of them. You know, if Bob wants to talk, which it looks like he doesn't, but let Bob talk about the importance of it.
I don't know. Like I said, I bought, I bought, I got him back in January of '16 after we completed class in May, took him home with me. He's with me 20, 27, pretty much. I see him when I do my kids. It's not always a good thing, but yeah, it's a, it's a tight bond, and, I mean, he's family. I don't know what else to say.
What type of situations are the dogs mostly using?
Say one more time, what type of situation?
What type of situations are the K-9s mostly using?
We have six dogs that are training patrol work as well as narcotics detection, and then we have one that's trained in bomb detection and firearm detection. Is that correct?
Alderman McMenamin?
We are probably one of the best K-9 units, maybe the best downstate, maybe in the state, based on number of working dogs in particular, and we can all be proud of that. I've got a few questions. Currently, we take, the dog handlers take their dogs home at night, and that's an outstanding practice, because that means the handler and the dog are ready to go at any time, potentially. You don't have to go to the pound to get the dog or anything like that. So will that practice continue?
Yes, and the kennels, maybe that's what people sometimes ask about, is the kennels. The kennels are for when they're there training, or for when these officers go on vacation and another K-9 officer has to come out and feed the dog, care for the dog, versus taking him home to his house. Or if the dog's sick or the handler's sick and they need to separate for isolation purposes, you know, so. But man, we do take the dog home at midnight.
My main concern is cost, and, you know, you can look in the daily newspaper and you can see a Morton building for, let's say, $30,000 or 30 foot by 56, a Morton building. I know we're doing much more than that with this. We're doing what we need to do for training and for, to allow other jurisdictions to get involved with dog training. And so the question I have is, and the reason I probably vote no to this, is that I would like to see some cost sharing with other jurisdictions. It's my understanding, for example, the county has one working dog for the entire Salmon County, and therefore, just like for animal control, we've joined with the county, and now we have one animal control facility. It would seem that the county would be interested in participating with the city and sharing some of the cost for a very expensive facility, which is going to have regional use and availability the way we're discussing it tonight. So that would be the basis for my no vote, that we need to share these costs and make our facilities available, but with some cost sharing, particularly with Salmon County. I assume we use our dogs if there's a need in Little Grove, or Jerome, or any other small jurisdictions, theoretically, they might make a request. And so that's the main reason for a no vote on this.
I can tell you, I've had a lot of experience with working dogs, been in law enforcement for 30 years, and these dogs are worth gold. They save lives, they are able to obtain evidence that we probably couldn't get without these dogs. They protect the police officers along with the public. There's no expense that I can see that we shouldn't spend on this, because these, these dogs are worth gold, and you don't have to worry about the votes. They're usually nine to one around here, anyway, so.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. So all those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Good job, chief.
And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, one voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2017-475, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW 18-08-40 with Semmo Construction Company for popular place street improvements for an amount not to exceed $1,76,145.2 for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to send the agenda number 2017-475 back to committee.
It's moved.
Second.
It's moved in second, and the discussion, the reason we're sending it back, we're trying to confirm with the construction company that they'd honor the pricing in April. That's when the actual work will start in the springtime. So any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, could we have a legal opinion regarding whether we've ever provided these kinds of funds for private roads in the past? And if there's a legal basis for spending money on private roads?
Sure. Unless you want to express it now.
No, I'll look at the circumstances, and I'll find out what we've done in the past.
Great. Any other discussion? Alderman Turner?
I just want to thank the mayor for clarifying that this is not going back to committee, because we're not interested in moving forward. It's just going a two-week delay. So after, at the end of the two weeks, if we have the information that we need, it will be coming back for a vote.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number 2017-478, an ordinance ratifying fiscal year 19 health insurance premiums and the health benefit summary plan description for the City of Springfield Union participants for the Office of Human Resources. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2017-478 on final passage.
It's moved.
Second.
It's moved in second. Any discussion?
Discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMenamin?
The concern I have with this, this ordinance and the next ordinance has to do with the need for a long-term plan for the cost obligations for future retirees. And, Mr. Holman, you've done an outstanding job explaining some of the cost containment that we're incorporating into the current plan, and so I think that's outstanding. You, the way you explained it at the last committee, the whole two weeks ago. I think, and at one point during that meeting, someone asked, well, you know, do we get suggestions from the public, from the alderman on how we can improve things? And one change that's incorporated into this policy is something that I raised five years ago. It had to do with the fact that if a current employee of the city wants to cover just himself under health insurance, there was an option where no premium was needed to be paid by that individual. And the Joint Labor Management Committee has now charging a premium for individuals that cover just themselves under a health plan. I think that's an excellent change that needed to be made, but it's a small piece of a much larger problem. And the larger problem is that our unfunded liability for the retirees was about $200 million when I came on the council, and it's now over $400 million. So we, may I think this is something that's beyond the expertise of any one individual alderman to suggest a remedy, but we need some experts to come in and to do more than just keep the self-funding insurance fund in balance, which is what basically the Labor Management Committee does. It keeps... Keeps enough money in the self-insurance fund and keeps it kind of on a level basis, but we're not looking enough at the unfunded liability which we pay out of, from future budgets. So that's the need, and that's the reason I'm gonna vote no on this, because we don't have a long-term plan to cover the, the healthcare costs of our retirees, particularly police and fire, which are, they often are able to retire, they take a run tail in their bodies, they retire at, let's say, age forty-five, and we cover them for roughly, in that case, let's say if they retired at age forty-five, for twenty years until they get to the age of sixty-five. And the costs of coverage are significant, and we need to put monies aside for that coverage and also obtain greater contribution from everyone for those set-aside funds.
I don't know if you want to respond, or, not the last Director McCarty to, so.
I can respond a little bit to that. A lot of what we do on our side to contain costs for the employees help to contain the costs for the retirees, because we don't have separate plans. I mean, you guys are free and able to make separate plans if you want to, but the cost of adding separate plans becomes prohibitive. And we do the best job we can. Like I said, the, the new plan that we have, the high deductible HSA plan, encouraging our retirees to take that plan, you guys can do things to encourage our retirees to, to take that plan if you would like. There are a lot of other things that go into it, you know? This unfunded liability that you talk about, it's always just been a cost of doing business, we've always accounted for it year to year. The employees and the retirees share a portion of the cost overall as a unit, that's the way it was set up when we came forward. And it's really one of the premier benefits that we have left at the city now. I'm, the, I believe, I'm not familiar with the police and fires retirement, but I think they've increased their age to retirement, which is, should be reducing that liability significantly. I think when I was asking before, they said about two-thirds to three-quarters of our employees are IMRF employees. Couple of years ago, the state changed to the tier-two system. So whereas right now our tier-one IMRF people have a ten-year bridge from age fifty-five to age sixty-five that is part of our liability, as of, I believe, January fourteen, all of our new IMRF employees cannot retire early until age sixty-two. So that ten-year bridge has been reduced down to a three-year bridge for roughly three-quarters of our people. So really, our tier-one liability, which is the biggest point of it, it really has peaked as far as the number of people that will ever be in that pool, and it's now starting to drop off. Every tier-one employee is approaching, one day closer to sixty-five every day. I don't disagree that there's a need to plan for these things, but this is just a new accounting standard that they're applying to it. And they're, the way they project that out is as if the costs are growing at the national trend. As you guys have seen from our budgets, we're not only not hitting national trend, we're doing unheard-of things, we're going backwards, we're going down, we're staying completely flat. And we're continuing to do things like this on the committee side to make everything work as well as possible. It's good to be concerned and to look at these kind of things, but if you want to make changes to the retiree side, the best thing that I would recommend is you just look at what we're doing on the employee side and how well it's working. Our wellness incentives, the fact that we require our people to go get an annual wellness exam for a ten percent differential on their premium, that's saving us way more than the ten percent differential. And we're expanding that wellness program, it's growing, it's been an overwhelming success, and it's partially responsible for the flat numbers that you guys are seeing now. And if it continues to work as we think it will, you know, we could be coming back here next year with another flat budget, you know? And that translates across the aisle to the retiree side.
Thank you, Mr. Holman, for those comments and those suggestions.
Director McCarty, do you have anything you want to add?
Actually, Mike did a pretty good job of articulating the situation. The bottom line is that OPEB liability is a long-term liability associated with providing retiree health insurance. If the city council wishes to reduce it, then they simply would require retirees to pay more or eliminate the program, well, you can't really eliminate it, but you can have them pay eighty or ninety percent like most other communities do. Fact is, our retirees, our policy is that they pay significantly less, and as a result, that long-term liability is there, but Mike is spot-on. It's always been treated just as a, an expense in the year, pay, pay as you go. And that will remain there as long as we continue to do what we're doing, but the committee is taking great strides in controlling costs. When you look at healthcare going up roughly eight percent per year and the fact that we've had flat or declining expenses and claims the last couple of years, that's extraordinary. And that's testament to the cooperation that management and the union representation has been able to, to do on the committee. And it's a, it's a, I know that, I don't know if Stephanie is here or not, but I know that we've been asked to speak about the success that we've had at conferences and to other communities because it's a testament to what we've been able to accomplish.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think that some of those comments weren't completely accurate because in the last budget year of Mayor Houston, we had supplemental appropriations come through the council, and the increase in the budget amount for healthcare costs for all employees and retirees, as I recall, was jumping in a twenty percent range a couple of years in a row. So we just have to be mindful of that, very recent history.
As to that, we were under a contract with a TPA that was paying our bills, Health Alliance. Unfortunately, they weren't doing their job, that's why they're not with us anymore. And the appropriation, we'd actually already collected the premiums to pay those bills, but Health Alliance had not paid them in the fiscal year that the bills were generated. So when our new TPA came in, we had to appropriate the funds that we'd already collected the previous year, move them forward for the budget authority to pay the bills that hadn't been paid the previous year. That's why we had to do that large appropriation, because we're basically paying a year and a half, a year and three-quarters worth of bills in one year. But the funds were already collected from the previous year, it just, the bills had not been paid. That was the majority of the issue that surrounded that particular instance you're talking about.
The facts will show for themselves, and so I recommend Budget Director McCarty, let's look at the last ten years of our budgeted health lines for our employees and retirees and let the facts, let's see that on paper, Mr. McCarty.
I'm not disagreeing with you, Alderman. We have had increases the last decade, I'm talking about the changes, the, the claims that have, we've experienced since the changes the last couple of years have been implemented. Those are the types of steps that are taken to try and control the growth. There is no doubt that we have a very expensive healthcare program, nobody's ever said anything different, but it is the cost of doing business under the policies that are in place here at the city. And if the city council wishes to change those policies and reduce that liability, we can provide the analysis that will show you what you can do to lower that liability if that is the wish of the council. I'm just simply explaining that, that we have been proactive in trying to control what we have today here under the policies that exist.
Alderman Thailand, do you have anything you wanted to add?
No, the point I had was made by Mr. Holman.
Any other discussion?
Thank you for the work you've done on this. What department do you work in?
I'm IBW, I'm a member of the substation department and the electric department.
So when you're, when you're ready to retire, come see the mayor, because we need to put you over in HR and help you do this guy.
They helped me out tremendously, as does Director McCarty. We, that's why this committee works, because although this is collective bargaining and there are times that we disagree, we work together for the best interest of both parties. Like I stated earlier, especially, I can talk from the utility side, our more technical areas, our skilled workers like the linemen, the substation guys. One of the last real benefits we have here that exceed those out in town and across town at Silco is our retiree health insurance. It's the, one of the last things we have that are helping us retain really skilled people in some of these harder-to-fill positions. I, I would assume that's probably the same on the management side, the engineering staff. This really is a good benefit. I, I wouldn't be trying to figure out how to get rid of it, let's try how, figure out how to manage it. And if anybody wants to talk to me personally, I, I'm always available to bounce ideas off of, and I'll tell you exactly what I believe to be true, so.
Thank you for your service, and just as a reminder, this group represents twenty unions, or how many was it?
Twenty-seven, I think.
And so instead of having to negotiate with each one separately, we do it all as one.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, one voting no. Next item on the agenda is number two thousand seventeen dash four seven nine, an ordinance approving fiscal year nineteen health insurance premiums and the Health Benefit Summary Plan Description for the City of Springfield active, non-union and non-active retired participants for the Office of Human Resources. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand seventeen dash four seven nine on final passage.
Been moved in second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, one voting no. Next item on the agenda is number two thousand seventeen dash four eighty-five, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with, and payment in an amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand dollars to Peckham, Geithen, Albers, and Beetz Inc., PGA V, to provide for a feasibility study regarding a tax increment finance district for an area generally bounded by East Clear Lake Avenue on the north, South Eleventh Street on the west, and East Pine Street on the south, and South Fourteenth Street on the east. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand seventeen dash four eighty-five on final passage.
Been moved in second.
Been moved in second. Chair will entertain a motion to amend agenda number two thousand seventeen dash four eighty-five.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in second. Discussion on the proposed amendment. Again, as a reminder, this basically amends where the funds are coming from, and so the corporate fund comes from the Madison Park Place Tiff. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The amendment passes. Discussion on the ordinance as amended? All those in favor of the ordinance as amended, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number two thousand seventeen dash four eighty-seven, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-one by adding subsection thirty-one point twenty-one D to the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended to establish a public utilities committee. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand seventeen dash forty-seven on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Alderman Thailand, then Seanor.
I guess my take on this is that we, I think Alderman Redpath may be the only other one who served as an alderman when we had the broken up four different committee meetings. The, I will reiterate what I said at committee, I think the committee of the whole has been a success overall. I think that it allows all ten aldermen to be involved in each of the four committees instead of just being involved in two of them like when I first started. I think that we do already give significant amount of time to the public utilities discussion and to the public utilities ordinances. I feel that while this is... I'm not saying that this is a bad idea, I'm saying that I'm not sure that it's needed. I, I think that the emphasis being broken out and set aside for the public utilities committee, when I read this, is the intent to have the public utilities ordinances go through this separate committee and then have it go to council, so we'd have, we'd have the committee for finance, public works, and general city business, and then we would have a separate committee that meets the same night with pretty much the same attendance for public utilities?
Well, that's the discretion of where to set the meeting, and the time of that is up to the alderman with regards to the structure. It'd be, everything related to corporate fund, you know, all the other departments would go to the committee as a whole, with the exception of the utility. So that would be a separate meeting where we would discuss the water department, the electric department, and whatever we'd like to with regards to the utility.
I feel that the current committee setup already allows for that under the Robert's Rules for Order with new business, old business, time for discussion under the different ordinances. I think that something like this, if it were created as a quarterly item for the presentations for other things of that nature, that's something that I feel that I could support, but I feel that this is just breaking something off, and then you're having three-quarters of it here and one quarter here, and it's not really doing anything, for me. I'm sure other people have their own opinions, but for that reason, I don't, I, I'm going to vote against this idea of this format because I don't feel that it's something that's actually substantive.
Alderman Redpath?
If we pass this ordinance, Mayor, does the city council have the authority to set up the rules for this committee based, it doesn't have to be basically set up the same as the committee of the whole or the city council, but they have the authority by, by majority vote to set up rules specifically just for this committee?
I'll leave that up to the current progress.
This is a, this would be, this would be a legislative committee. The city council would determine the makeup of the committee and its jurisdiction. So you could, to try to answer, give you some broad information here, if you wanted the utility, the public utility committee to hear ordinances, you could. If you didn't want them to, and just leave it in the committee of the whole, but use this as a mechanism just to receive reports or ask questions, then that would be up to the council to determine jurisdiction and membership.
So we could set up a schedule if, following up with Alderman Thailand's suggestion, set up a schedule not necessarily to meet every, every week or every month, maybe quarterly, or set up rules such as how we're gonna proceed through the whole procedure on addressing the committee and what kind of things we're gonna discuss, correct?
And may I also mention, the ordinance does reference that it should meet not less than once a month.
Okay, so we'd have to do an amendment if we wanted to change that timeframe?
If you wanted to omit the reference, what says, but not less than once a month, then it would, then it would say, "Show meet at such times deemed necessary."
So, so if we pass this and we...
Yes, it could be.
So if we pass this in our first meeting, if we have changes to the ordinance, the rules, or specific ideas that we want to bring to the committee, that would be, that would all be in order, is that correct?
Correct, meaning that you can, this is an amendment to the city code. It also, in the same section, references the, you know, basically the other committees and so on. So if you would, if you leave it, but not less than once a month, and that's how it would be, but you would determine the time, date, place of the meeting, what the topics are, another of the agenda, and what jurisdiction, meaning what it would deal with.
So would it be better for us to bring those proposals to the, to the council before we pass this, or should we wait till the committee's formed and then bring them to the committee?
Well, I think that's a, it seems to me the first step is decide whether or not you would like, or if there's support to do a public utilities committee. Then I think the role of that committee could be discussed with the council, even at the committee of the whole, to decide what it should do. And if you do want it to be less infrequent than once a month, then this would then be, should be amended now, if you want to say, but not less than quarterly, for example, or if you wanted to delete that last part, that would leave intact the committee, but then ultimately the city council has to determine, because it's legislative, keep in mind, this is a legislative committee, therefore, the council determines its role and who's on it and so on.
Good. Alderman, Seanor, then, and I.
We also have to address the makeup because in subsection B, it says, "Council may establish by ordinance in the legislative committee as deemed necessary," et cetera, et cetera. The chairman and vice chairman of the legislative committee shall rotate consecutively, consecutively on a monthly basis, beginning with Alderman Ward one, and the chairman and Alderman Ward two, as the vice chairmen, so that is, these points to the city council, to have a committee on the committees."
Only city council members can be a member. In other words, this is...keep in mind, this is a city council legislative committee.
That contradicts something I was saying earlier about how we can have a committee made up before we went from the way that I'm...I've mistaken the word if I'm not mistaken. It would say that we would have a role we wanted to be on the committee.
From the city council.
From the city council.
And it may be, and I'll just throw this out here, not...it would be probably appropriate that in effect you would have everybody would serve on the committee, and then you would just determine what the timing and what its role should be.
Well, I refer back to Alderman Tyler and Alderman Redpath and something, because I think that just creates another medium responsibility that would already taken care of my duties on committee of the whole next.
Alderman Hannah?
Yeah, I guess the question for you, Mayor, is what is not happening currently in the committee of the whole that we're not...that you see a void or something? Because, I mean, why can't we adjust the committee of the whole if we're missing something? We adjust the committee of the whole because we've got it broken down by different departments and just adjust the committee of the whole and not have another legislative committee?
I think the magnitude of CWP's operations, I think if you followed it over the last two years, I think there's a lot of issues that came up. I can run through those, or people from the audience can go over that, but, you know, we have Bowman 31 and 32. When's the logical time to take them offline, creating a strategic plan for the utility? You know, the ash pond's been discussed, the list goes on and on. And we are turning the corner with regards to finances, but, you know, we need to get more into the detail, I think, with the general public discussion. That's just my own personal opinion. So each alderman, you know, has to make that determination of, you know, how much knowledge is enough.
Aren't you doing that with your forms now? You have provided, what, three or four forms for CWP in the last couple of years?
I think it's...I'll ask my friends out in the audience, how many, two or three? One's supposed to come up.
There's supposed to be one, there's been two this year, right? One that we've talked about.
But, Mr. Mayor, I think it comes up. Each one of us have had a ward meeting where the public was invited to share their concerns, and when we give those concerns, they've been recorded and reported out on, so I think...I don't know how much more...
Well, we...
What...finish my thought.
Yep.
I don't know how much more space we need to allow people to express their concerns because no one has been told that they cannot express their concerns on anything that's happened in the city. And so I don't know what other form would be acceptable for folks to express those concerns.
Well, the ward meetings are, you know, it covers a broad scenario of items, what's important for each ward, and then as a city as a whole, but there's probably not a month, a meeting per month where something doesn't come up with regards to the utility, where more information is needed, great concerns moving forward, and really providing that direction that is being asked upon. So that's the reason for this ordinance to come forward. But if you'd like to introduce yourself and, you know, state whatever you'd like, we'd appreciate it.
Sure, well, Alderman Proctor was flagging you up, so. My name is Elizabeth Crawford, I am a resident of the very fine Ward Six, work for Sierra Club. So what...I think there were some questions about how many forms have been held so far or this year, because this year there's been two. Last May of 2016, there was one. So one May of 2016, I think one this May, and then one in September, if I'm getting my dates right. So we're due for one more before the end of the year.
Any questions? So I guess I'd ask you to elaborate. What was your...what's your thoughts? And we haven't consulted, I just think this, you know, this is one of the things I proposed when during the campaign, but where do you see the value, or what do you think's missing from the current structure?
You are putting me on the spot.
Yep, sure.
Sure, fair enough, I put you on the spot all the time. So I think, like you said, there's a lot of interest in this subject. I think, like you said, there's a lot of decisions to be made. So the question is, do you have adequate time as alderman to review the material, to ask the questions that you need to ask? Does the community have time to respond? There's been a huge interest in the public meetings that have happened. The last one was, you know, announced just a few days beforehand, and you had a full room of folks, and I think that shows that there's a lot of interest in this subject, and folks understand that this is a complex issue with decisions that need to be made coming down the line. This is a huge utility that you all are running, which is a huge undertaking, and I think the question of do you need more time to do that is a good one. Sierra Club hasn't had an opinion on this ordinance, so to speak. I think, you know, we encourage and like more transparency and public process in general, that's what we and the NAACP has been talking about for a long time. This isn't something specifically that we have asked for. I think guaranteed if you have this, you're going to have people coming out and engaging in the process. Because I think folks have shown, you know, the people of Springfield have shown that they want to engage in that process.
Alderman Turner?
Do you...so do you think that more people would come to a CWP committee meeting, which would basically be a committee of the whole, than come to the committee of the whole to discuss issues?
So the issue with...the only issue I see with folks coming to city council is sometimes that it's scary, because you are sitting up above people, right? You have to wait, if you have kids, waiting. You saw last week lots of people that had little kids that couldn't wait till the end of the meeting to speak, had to leave or had to have someone else take their kids. So I think there's a question of how do parents get to engage in city council issues just in general? And then if you want to speak to a specific issue, generally speaking, you have to wait till the very end of council. Maybe you think council's going to go an hour, but it goes two and a half hours, which we all know happens sometimes. So for folks, if you want to speak to a specific issue, it's really hard to do that and get to speak to all of you at the same time.
But if there's a...excuse me. But if there is a specific ordinance that you want to speak on, then that happens during the course of the meeting, not at the end of the meeting. I think the only time that happens at the end of the meeting is if there is an issue that you want to bring forward that's not necessarily on the agenda.
I have an answer for you, Alderwoman Turner. I've been coming to the city council three years, and in all honesty, it's very rarely that I've seen someone who wanted to speak specifically about the utility get to speak when that ordinance comes up. Normally, if there's a question about the utility, folks have to wait till the end. The only time I ever see people speak when it comes to a specific ordinance is if it's a zoning issue, when you have that first meeting of the month for the 30 minutes, people get a call up. Otherwise, it seems to be if it's been prearranged beforehand that people get to speak when a specific ordinance is called.
But that's the process. If people wanted...the agenda is...and I'm not...I'm just giving information, I'm not being argumentative.
Sure.
That's why the agenda is posted, and if people want to speak to a specific ordinance, then they make that known, and then, you know, they're called up during that...when that ordinance is being discussed.
Not going to argue with you, I don't think that happens specifically in relation to CWP. I've sat in council quite a few times, I've put my own name on the agenda, and maybe it's because it's me, I don't know, but I normally have to wait, and that's okay, right? I can wait all night. I recognize, though, that's a privilege that I have, that I have time to come and sit in council, and I think that there are lots of people that have other things going on. So if you know that this is the 30 minutes I have, this is the 45 minutes, this is the hour and a half or a minute, I can ask these questions, then you can show up. But if you...if you care about an ordinance and then you have to wait till the very end, for those folks that can't stay the whole meeting, then they don't get to speak, and I have seen that happen.
Okay, well, I will, taking your concern, I think I would ask council coordinator to have a discussion with the city clerk to find out where the disconnect is with people indicating that they want to speak on the ordinance and that not being relayed to either the mayor or to the committee chair, because that's an issue...I mean, that's definitely a problem if that's happening. So I would ask the...and we don't need to get into it right now, but I think that the council coordinator should have a discussion with the city clerk to find out where the disconnect is happening. And, you know, you raised a valid point, so maybe what we should do, taking that into consideration, is that start talking about whether we should have a committee for public safety, public works, and finance so that people, you know, so that we could show the same consideration to people who have concerns about ordinances in that category as well. So I think you have valid points, and I think that maybe we should look at instituting a committee structure that would take into consideration those other areas as well. So thank you for conveying that.
And I mean no disrespect by that either. I mean, I think you all see me in council on a regular basis, and so it's just what I've observed that happens over the years.
No, 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 no disrespect at all, and I appreciate you bringing those concerns forward because it gives us an opportunity to do a better job of engaging the public.
Alderman Senior, and then Alderman Fugenti?
Since you brought a link to your point, if someone's coming for a specific instance, say they want to talk about this, three, three, or three, or four, if it's on the agenda, then they're going to have to wait in council anyway till that comes up, so we're just taking the problem from...or taking the problem from committee of the whole, or taking the situation, I won't call it that, but taking that situation and moving it to another time with another committee. So how is that going to affect any change with what's going on now?
Sure, so...
So we'll just be discussing, and going to...Alderman Turner, then, of people from the public safety and all the other committees, all the other concerns the same.
I have a couple of answers, as always, Alderman Senior. So I think one thing is, do you want to have the conversation ordinance at a time, or do you want to have the conversation as what's the vision for the utility moving forward? How are we making decisions? All of the issues that Mayor Lenfelter brought up were not ordinance numbers, right? They're how are we going to make a strategic plan for the utility going forward, which is a little bit different than the wanting to speak on a specific ordinance issue and having to wait for it to the end, right? That's a how do we cast a vision, how do we make a long-range plan looking into the next five, 10, 15, 20 years, which most public utilities are doing. So that's a bigger conversation, and do you all have time on a Tuesday night to have that conversation? I don't know where you want to have the conversation, but I think it needs to be had.
What I'm trying to get at is, how do we accomplish what the mayor wants to accomplish with this ordinance and not create the same environment? Because I think we're just creating the same environment without really attacking what the concerns are. But you might have the same group, and we're going to be discussing the same things in the same environment. So how do we create that new environment and attack the concerns? That's my question.
I can answer that. It's set by the agenda, so we would have more time for presentations or whatever the direction would be. So it does allow for that not...that additional time, we're not rushed with regards to that. And so really, the magnitude, what you need to do is compare the dollars, and Director McCarty can speak specifically to the dollars, but, you know, with the corporate fund, which are all the eight departments, that's roughly 118 million, somewhere around there. And then so with the utility, we're talking 300 million, so it's twice the size. And so really, you know, we're spending millions of dollars at times, and there's been questions raised on various projects, and a lot of times, or some of the times, it's, well, we'll have to get back with you. But we're making the informed decision at that point in time, so it's good to have as much information as possible at that point in time or before we have those decisions made. And that's what having this structure would do, is provide operationally what's the long-term plans for maintenance, scheduling. You just could cover a wide variety of subject matters related to the utility operations.
That's not the context that I was speaking of. We're still going to be sitting up here in our seats, and people are still going to be sitting in audits, so how do we break that barrier down so that people are thinking? Because if we're having a meeting here, and the people are coming, and we're sitting up in the same situation, how do we break the barrier down with people saying, well, it's the same, it's in the same place, the same people, the same seats, and I've got to go through the same procedure? So how do we attack that and get it across to the citizens, even though it's in the same army, it's a different feeling?
Well, we could call up, ask for comments after each ordinance. Then we could do that, it could be as simple as that. Alderman Fugenti?
What specific ordinance were you not allowed to speak on, taken out of context or taken...
Sure, so Norman's sitting back there, for example, he's come lots of times to speak to specific ordinances. I mean, I think the...
Did he explain that he wanted to speak on that ordinance and was refused?
No, not refused. There's a difference between refuse and just put it at the end of the agenda when the comments come, right?
And there will always be an ordinance that's last.
No, the...I'm really truly not trying to start an argument. And I could probably look back in time over the last, you know, three years and come up with ordinances for you, or you can look at the times different folks have put in requests to speak. I'm not coming with you at you with an accusation at all because this specific ordinance isn't my doing. What?
What the problem is. I'm trying to find out what the problem is, if there is a problem on our end, and maybe somebody doesn't speak up and say, I want to talk about that ordinance.
I think what it is, is when people sign up to speak, we just put them at the end thinking it's the public comment period, but if they have a specific ordinance, that's oversight by our office or some disconnect somewhere. But that's what we need to determine with regards to when people call up and make sure that we're aware of it. But just for clarification, this is not a Sierra Club ordinance, this is my ordinance, and, you know, I've been following city government for a long time. My father was mayor a long time ago, and they used to have, as Alderman Turner pointed out, committee meetings for each department. And they consolidated it all, I think, under...
Dablin.
Mayor Dablin. And to consolidate the process, make it easier, move it, things forward, and so that's what's happened. But really, I think what's happened in that process is sometimes we don't have as much detail, as much discussion as the, not only the public, but city council members and others would like to have. And that's why I think it's important to, especially with this large department, that we should have it as a separate meeting to itself. Alderman De Center?
Instead of having the three meetings a year, why can't we just increase it to six? And then the alderman that went to attend can go, and I went to the first one in May, and several of you were there. I mean, that gives the public a very neutral zone to meet in. The first one, I think, was at the lake house, the second one was at the library, the beach house. So, you know, why don't we just increase those numbers, those number of meetings, and that way it's an open forum, everyone can talk, it's more informal, just an idea.
Alderman Tyler? I have two points. The first one is, is that I was alderman when Mayor Dablin brought forward the idea to bring the committee of the whole together. We were having budget crisis issues at the time, we were asking people for furlough days, we were doing anything we could to save a dollar. And this was one of the things that came forward, that it had a fiscal impact, it had an impact on the overtime of the audiovisual staff, had an impact on the overtime of some of the other staff who had to come and report to city council, whether it be CWP employees, legal employees, sometimes public works employees about roads, sidewalks, other things of that nature. There was an overtime and a cost portion to this, which was why committee of the whole, everybody came together one night, audiovisual staff was here one night, everything got controlled. I want to say, Alderman Donald, do you remember, was the savings about one-third of the original cost? I can't comment on that, Alderman, without looking it up. It's been a long time, and we are all getting older, but I would just like to point out that one of the things is, is that on this ordinance, there is no fiscal impact filled in. There would be a fiscal impact, there would be a fiscal impact of the audiovisual staff, the public utility staff that would have to be here who are not salaried, other things of that nature. So there is a fiscal impact that is not recorded on the fact sheet of this ordinance. My second point is, is I'd like to concede the floor to the city clerk, because I think he's getting a bad rap and doesn't deserve it. In the 10 years that I've been an alderman, people who have signed up, whether it's been with Clerk Tumulty or Clerk Lesko, if they say, if they call, if they call me and they say, hey, I want to come in, I want to talk about that ordinance, I say, when you call the city clerk's office, tell them that you want to speak about ordinance 2017-522. If they say that, then that's the information that's handed to the mayor or that the clerk is sitting there. When that ordinance comes up, he'll say to the mayor, or she would say to the mayor, you have someone signed up to speak about this. Now, if the person calls in and says, I want to talk about CWP and shutting down Bowman 31, they didn't... 31, they didn't ask to speak on an ordinance, they asked to speak about an idea. And that, I think, is the difference. Maybe we need to explain that better when people are calling in or when they're going into the clerk's office to go. But in my opinion, from what I've seen of the clerk's staff and the 10 years that I've been an alderman, they've been pretty good about if the person is saying they're there to speak about an ordinance, they get put on it. And I'm going to concede the floor to Clerk Lesko.
Well, I think you hit the points, Alderman Tyler. And the other thing is, we ask anybody who comes in if they want to speak on a specific ordinance. And then we follow the procedure that you spoke about. So thank you.
So we'll keep a watchful eye on that, but we still have the committee structure at hand. Alderman Proctor?
Yeah, just really quick, I'm all about the separation of powers, you know, executive branch, legislative branch and stuff. And it's been stated this, this is to give more transparency and, you know, get more alderman involvement in this process with the utility. Because I'll admit, we went through certain different decision points with the utility. It was kind of hard or somewhat uncomfortable sometimes asking for information to make proper judgments. And so I asked this question like two weeks ago when we first talked about this. If this is created and we, you know, all aldermen are on this committee, then if this committee makes an ask of the utility, it'll have the same weight and power as if it's coming from the mayor's office.
As far as-
Just anything.
It's legislative, so whatever the-
Or studies or whatever.
I let corporate scouts discuss.
The, the city council and aldermen, I mean, I think that happens actually pretty frequently. The council can ask for any information desires about budgeting or policies or city code or, you know, that's all very proper within the legislative jurisdiction. And this committee, again, depending on what the council says its jurisdiction is, would certainly be able to request information, you know, like on a policy issue or a proposed budget or if there's questions about how current money's being spent, that sort of thing. It would be just a very, what I would consider a pretty normal legislative process.
Okay. Does that answer my question? I don't know how, if we want to affect by emissions or whatever, get more information for discussing ordinance and stuff, we'd have that authority.
Right, we'd ask that you probably take it before Tim Griffin so there's not duplication or something of that nature.
But what-
Alderman Anar?
Okay, so what's diff- again, I ask, what's different with this committee than what, than what we can ask for, for information now? We can, we, I ask for, I, I drive probably CWP crazy at times.
You do?
I'm sure I do. I'll, I'll admit it. And, and my, so, so I guess, Andrew, my, my question is, is there anything different? We can ask for anything now, this committee's not going to give us any more power or anything like that.
That's why I asked the question, because if we don't create the committee, then what's the point? You know, that's, that's the only last question. No disrespect to anybody who, you know, failing to gather information or holding anything back, but just, just wanted to clear on the record that that's, you know, this committee would have that authority.
You know, Mayor Langfelter has made this as transparent as he can. He's holding meetings now that he doesn't have to hold.
Oh, I agree.
He's going to continue to do that.
I agree.
And, you know, that's a better form for that type of thing, other than this, we're being redundant if we vote this in because we're just, we're just having two committees to do the same thing. That's the way I see it.
Like I said, if we do something quarterly, where we had the special, like we have the budget here presentation today, and we've got the, isn't that mandated by city ordinance that that's done quarterly right now? Where we're getting the financials quarterly?
Thanks to Alderman Turner.
Yes. But my point is, is something like that on a quarterly basis, we could say that we're going to have the public utilities committee for this quarter, we're going to have the financial presentation, we're going to have this presentation, we're going to have that presentation, and we just leave the other items in committee of the whole the way they stand now. But then you would have announcement to the public that we're going to have this special committee where we have this presentation, and then it would be something that may actually be beneficial in my eyes. But I'm, I, I just keep seeing redundancy is the only thing that I'm seeing right now.
Well, I can see where this is going, so here's my list. Right now, we'll make it a part of the record. Quarterly, we'd like a report on strategic planning. Quarterly, we'd like a report on environmental practices, what's the long-range plans for the ash ponds? What's the operational expense for each unit? Bowman 31, 32, 33, and 4. Hunter Lake, what's the status of that? Probably more on a monthly basis because of what we experienced this summer. So, you know, we can give them the list, but what we don't want to hear is, you know, let's hurry up through the agenda, we need to be thoughtful in the processes moving forward. Because, you know, what we get knocked around for is not giving enough information. And so that's why we're giving you the opportunity for that. And the reason for that is we've heard the public ask for it. So, you know, I know you, you've talked about the costs for, you know, having that extra meeting. What's the cost for transparency? I mean, that's what you have to correlate. So that's what it comes down to, but, you know, you know, I think the discussion's been had, you can, you know, vote however you want, but this is the opportunity to be more open to the public where everybody has the information, all the aldermen have the same information because it's important as alderman, you know, we've been hit on through Citizens Club, other organizations, that maybe we should have a public committee oversees utility. And my argument is always, no, the committee that oversees it are the city council members. They have to make the educated decisions based on the facts and the information they receive. So that's the reason for being, bringing this forward is moving in that direction. So there is more openness and there's not a cloud of secrecy with regards to utility. We're operating like a business as much as possible. So those are just some of the items that we'd come forward with, but we can give the list and have the reports done on a regular basis and I can direct them to do that. But I thought besides the utility, it's good to have it as a separate meeting once a month or once a quarter or what have you. But again, you're the legislative body, so you have to make that determination yourselves.
Alderman Turner?
May I offer an amendment that the committee meet quarterly?
For a second.
Thank you.
Do you, Alderman, do you want it to read, but not less than once a quarter?
Yes.
Instead of once a month?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, I think from what I've heard from everybody, I think that that would be a good compromise.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, what I, when I first read this ordinance, I envisioned it being more of all the, all the ordinances that are related to the utility going to the committee and us hearing, but I appreciate the clarification tonight about, you know, the long-range planning, getting updates on major items. It's more of a, the way I see it is, this, this public utilities committee idea is a way of not only putting, providing the public notice that, hey, we're going to dive deep into some of these topics, but it's a way to, it actually puts the utility and all of us on notice that we're going to dive in those top, these important topics. There's a lot of unknowns that we have coming forward in the next, not only a few weeks and months, but, you know, long term, that we need to address. And I just appreciate, I appreciate you wanting to provide us the opportunity to dive into some of these things because they are important, they are complex, and I'll support your amendment, Alderman.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I'd like to make one suggestion. Alderman Turner, what would you, what would you think we should do with the chairmanship then? Should it be, because right, it won't be one, two, three, four, should we make it something where we put it up for vote by the body or should we make it match whoever the chairman is of that month?
You know, I would, it doesn't really matter to me, how, whatever's easiest, because I think that what I, what I probably, what will probably happen at these meetings would be more of a town hall type, type situation rather than a committee. You know, what we envision as a committee of the whole would be more like a town hall and whatever the subject matter for that quarter is, that's what will be discussed. And I would imagine that the mayor would be more like a moderator rather than a chairman.
To me, I think that because of, as the mayor pointed out, the specific subjects, I think maybe we ought to take a page from the past and then have the body elect the chairman for the year for those four quarterly meetings, because then that chairman can keep things organized for all four meetings.
I'd be open to that, that's fine.
May I add that to your amendment?
Yes, may.
I make the motion.
Sorry. They moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't think I moved on the other one. Moved in second and on the quarterly?
Chairman for the year.
All returns.
The, the first should be done in order.
Right, that's why I added to her amendment, so there's still just one amendment.
If the, if you would like to restate, normally what would happen is if you're amending the amendment, we'll vote on it first. The, the motion by Alderman Thailand to add language that would indicate city council shall select a chairman which shall serve on an annual basis.
Yes, that is the motion.
So if that, if there's a motion in the second for that-
Andrew.
Then it would be appropriate to take that first and then the, to add that to Alderman Turner's.
Any discussion on the chairmanship? Alderman Senor?
Not on the chairmanship, but on section two, so the clerk's going to amass all this information from CWP or the concerns from citizens, make a pamphlet up.
I think that's up to the-
I mean, because that's in, that's in the ordinance here. So, I mean, is that part of what we're going to do also?
Well, let's vote on the amendment first, the amendment as amended. Are the-
First, second, Alderman Thailand's amendment. Amendment and that voice vote is appropriate.
Yep. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say nay, motion carries.
And then the next would be on Alderman Turner's motion to indicate but not less than quarterly instead of monthly.
And then the discussion is with regards to Alderman Senor's question about-
That point of order, section three refers to, this is, again, this is in all of the ordinances that address the city code. We are required, we are required, we are required to, as the city clerk as well, we are to publish by, in pamphlet form, anything to do with the city code. That's a statutory requirement and what that means is it's put in a written form and available at the clerk's office. It's purely a, you'll see that with every city code amendment.
Thank you.
So going back, now it would be appropriate if the council so chose to vote on the amendment that Alderman Turner presented, to modify it from monthly to quarterly.
Any discussion on modifying it to quarterly?
Discussion.
Alderman McMenon?
In deciding to go whether, to go to quarterly, it would be helpful to know the scope of the matters that would come before the, the subcommittee. In other words, again, others have asked, well, do we send all utility ordinances through this committee? And if that's the case, we've got a strong delay, you know, of only approving.
I think, I think that was, that was just a casual comment that he made. That's not what would happen. The ordinances would still go through the normal ordinance review and passage process. The quarterly meeting of this committee would be to discuss those other issues such as long-term planning, you know, those-
Presentations.
Presentations, those types of issues. So the, the ordinances related to CWP would follow the normal review and passage process.
That makes, that makes sense, although we haven't amended this to say that yet.
Corporateish counsel?
Well, the, there's a whole separate ordinance or rules on the committee of the whole. Those are still staying in place. So what, you know, so we don't get too bogged down here in the, just the technical points, what I would anticipate you would want to do would then be to follow up with this with an amendment to the rules specifying the jurisdiction and specifying the, that does say but not less than quarterly, if it was necessary, you could meet more than quarterly. So it says not less than quarterly. But I would expect you would want to adopt a rule defining the role of the utility committee. And that would be such things as the topics of, for example, the, you know, what items or how you would go about the process, maybe including general public comments and so on. We'll have a, we would have a rule because we currently have a city council procedures, rules and procedures adopted by ordinance. It sets out the current process with a committee of the whole. Then I would anticipate you would simply add a rule relating to just the utility committee that would then define it. Act membership and so on.
Right. Alderman Donald?
And corporateish counsel, I appreciate you reiterating that like you did earlier. Mike, my question is, if we wanted to, if the council's desire is to amend those rules, is that done through resolution?
Yes, there's a further action in order, someone would direct to, here's what we wanted to say, it would be prepared and then presented to council and then that is adopted, defining the role of the committee.
Okay, thank you.
And, and that currently exists for the committee of the whole. There's a rule that defines what the committee of the whole does.
Thank you.
Okay.
So any other discussion on the amendment as amended, right?
This would be for Doris, I'm sorry, Alderman Turner's, I apologize. The amendment relating to changing it from monthly to not less than quarterly.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion passes, so now discussion on the ordinance as amended twice. Correct?
Yes. Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no, the voting is now open.
And the ordinance passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2017-522 and an ordinance accepting grant number 18-373004 from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of $215,370 with matching funds in the amount of $107,685 for a total grant amount of $323,055 for the International Marketing Grant Program beginning July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018 and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $215,370 for the spring break mention and visitors' bail for emergency passage.
Second.
It moved in second, any discussion? Alderman Thailand?
This is my employer at the state, so I'll be voting present.
But do you support it?
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? Alderman McMenon?
Yeah, for six years I voted no to emergency passage. Even, we put this on emergency passage, even when one of our aldermen was director of the Office of Tourism. And I did, I find it unusual that we always put this on emergency passage. I appreciate Alderman Gemberlin, he reached out and alerted me that this would be on emergency passage and asked for any communication.
Who's the director?
Director, sorry, director. So just wanted to explain my no vote, it's been consistent no vote for six years.
And I don't know if there's any questions for Director Gemberlin?
There's a reason why it's on emergency passage, it's because they don't know when they're going, will be getting the funding, so they have, that's how it has to be done.
If you'd like to come up, Director Gemberlin, and just sort of cross this, we'd appreciate it.
They have no control.
Alderman?
Alderman, thank you for bringing me up this evening, Kristen. The international grant and the LTC grant are both grants through the Illinois Office of Tourism, as you all know. As you all are aware, the last few years, those processes have changed with what's happened with, down at the state house. Last year, the new grant guidelines did go into effect, which are the GADA guidelines. So therefore, we do have less time to have the signatures and everything in place so we can obtain those funds. We have submitted our application any day now, they will approve that application, hopefully. Once they approve that application, we only have seven days to get it back down to the mayor's office, have it signed by the appropriate individuals within the city and the county before getting it back to the state.
Alderman Senor?
Has there ever been a time when you have not received a grant? Or is this a, is this a timing thing that you have to go through?
This is just a timing thing. This year, we waited until we did receive the grant numbers. Last year, if you recall, to avoid the emergency passage, we did do it earlier, we did say not to exceed, and at that point, there was concerns by some of the aldermen at that point, so we went back to following these guidelines.
Did you always receive a grant?
Correct.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance, vote yes, those opposed vote no, the voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, one voting no, one voting present. Next item on the agenda is number 2017-523, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of grant number 18-751029 from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity under the local-
under the Local Tourism and Convention Journey Grant Program in the amount of $394,556 with matching funds required in the amount of $197,278, beginning July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, and authorizing supplemental appropriation in the amount of $394,556 for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau for Emergency Passage. It moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, none voting no. Is there any unfinished business coming for the city council?
Yes, please. Alderman Thailand? Director Gemberlin, I would like to congratulate you, the advertising campaign that they presented to us. I've already seen some of the ads come up on Pandora, I've seen the advertising on Facebook. Matter of fact, I've got friends that are in Chicago that are displaced from Springfield, and they love the horseshoe ad. I just wanted to pass that along to you, that it's getting noticed, and people are commenting.
Thank you. Do they love the horseshoe, or just the ad?
Oh, they're, they're from here. They say horseshoes are a way of life.
That's good. Any other unfinished business? I have a couple items. One is, the award plan meetings have concluded, so we will make note to that, and hopefully you have those planned in place by next month, as far as the notes with each particular award, and comments made as the city as a whole. And then the comprehensive plan, public forum, will be November 16th, I believe, at 5:30 in the city council chambers. So, again, the city, the comprehensive plan is online, but it is a working document, right now anyway, and it will be after passage. But once it's codified through the city council, this will be our blueprint for land use in Springfield in a mile and a half radius around Springfield. So I encourage everyone ready to go online, if they haven't done so, and look at, to Springfield dot IL dot US, and look at least where you live and where you work, and see what's planned for the long-term future with regards to land use on business development, commercial development, recreational areas and neighborhoods, things of that nature. And provide feedback through the website, or come to the public meeting, November 16th. Any questions on that, or comments? The other item I'd like Juan Rortiz to come up and give an update on, the winter warmer center. He's been working hard and diligently towards that, and partnering with Helping Hands, so we appreciate his hard work.
Thank you, Mayor. The shelter is going to open Sunday, I believe it's November 12th, and it's going to go up through, from the 12th to March 31st. The building looks really nice. If anybody wants to stop by and see it, let me know. We're having a little opening tomorrow, which the media is able to come, and, you know, we have a good relationship with Helping Hands, so everything is going well.
What time is that open for the mayor, sir?
10 to 11.
When is the address?
10:15 East Madison. So I think that, I want to thank Public Works, CWLP, everybody did a great job helping with the building, so.
Thank you very much.
Good job, Mark.
Excellent. Thank you.
Is there any new business coming for the city council? Alderman McMenamin?
Mr. Mayor, I just talked with Director McCarty about the Comcast franchise agreement. As I recall, we've, that's come to us several times going back, probably three or four years now, and I think we've temporarily extended the agreement. The reason I'm bringing up the Comcast franchise agreement is that there's always a lot of community concerns about the Comcast services being rendered, and most recently, that concern was expressed when the Channel 17, the weather station, was eliminated from the, the basic channels that are available at the low-cost level for our citizens. And there's been a fair amount of discussion about that, and so, Director McCarty, could you review the status of our Comcast franchise agreement and when the next extension runs out, or the current extension runs out, and notify, inform the council at the next opportunity?
Sure.
Thank you.
And corporalish counsel, do you want to give an update on the negotiations going on?
Yeah, there's, you may recall that there's been an audit with Comcast. The, there are some proposals on the table, they have not been finalized. They're fairly complex, because they have to do with the calculations and the date and time and structure of the underpayments. I would advise that preliminarily, they have indicated that they're, they're in agreement there would be a fairly substantial refund due to the city, and I would expect that probably, I'm thinking probably within the next 30 days or so, based on the current status. So, but, that has to do with Azovar, the, they've agreed that they do owe a fairly substantial amount of money, they're claiming certain credits, and that's ongoing.
During that discussion, we bring up Channel 17 and...
No, certainly. I, I actually made a note, because there are, we are very limited because of the federal law on the substance, whether or not they would be amenable to include that in what's, they're kind of like their base package, you know, there's a base package, a minimum. We can make an inquiry on why they made that change. In other words, that may be something they've done nationally, I'm not sure, we'll find out.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman McMenamin, thank you for that update regarding the audit. I think Alderman Turner, you said, and Alderman Donlin, I think the three of us were on the council about four years ago when we authorized an audit of the franchise tax by Comcast. The, the concern was that Comcast was not fully paying all their franchise fees based on the actual number of subscribers within the city corporate limits. And so that's a good report to know that that audit is, by an outside auditing firm, has come into completion, and that there appears to be a significant refund coming to the city. That's good news.
I would say that I would advise the council that the evidence shows that there is a substantial underpayment, and we're arguing over the extent of how many years. That's where the fundamental discussion is happening right now.
And actually, I have to give Director McCarty some credit too, because when I was treasurer, I attended a conference, and that's how I met Azovar, brought that to the mayor's administration at that point in time, and I encouraged them to go that direction. So they're partially responsible for getting that audit run, up and running too.
May I add, without, yeah, without question, and what's happening is that a whole series of cities have now initiated audits. Springfield is further along because of the, the, the nature and the extent of the audit, actually the evidence that's been developed. And so Comcast is now working on trying to make a global settlement. And so we're going to be at the, kind of the forefront of that.
Alderman senior?
I got a call Sunday about the weather channel being taken off, but I didn't get, I didn't get a name, I didn't get, I got those from an anonymous phone call, so I can't respond to those types of people. So if you do have concerns, please leave your name and your phone number, courtesy, so we, we can respond to you if, if there is a concern. So we've got to draw that up, Alderman, because I couldn't bring it up, I didn't know who to respond to.
Thank you. Great. Any other new business? Alderman Turner?
Yeah, I just wanted to commend and congratulate the individuals that organized the first Halloween parade downtown. I thought it was, I participated with the Singamo 4-H Metro group, and the city was fully represented down there, and so I thought it was really, you know, really nice. There was a huge attendance, so I hope that there was enough participation that it will definitely happen again next year. I think that it's always nice when we can bring people, you know, downtown, so.
I think probably close to 1,000 people probably attended, is well-attended, so it's something we can build upon. Director McCarty, you want to say anything? Or is Parent Place, I think, was the coordinator of that?
Right, right. Parent Place is a local nonprofit organization, I'm actually president of the board, and we were the ones who came to the city with the idea of putting this parade on, and we, we promoted it and did it. We're very pleased, we were, just like you, we were surprised with the turnout. It was much higher, given it was year one, than we had anticipated, and we were also very pleased with the number of, the number of folks who participated. We had about 30, I think, entries in the parade, and everybody we talked to that evening was very, very pleased with, with everything. So it'll definitely be back, we're already in the planning stages for next year, and you can mark your calendars for, I believe it's October 27th. We're going to try to do it a little earlier next year. I gotta get with Kenny Winslow, and maybe we'll start about 6:30 next year.
Any other new business? Couple items I have, I'd ask Val Yezel to come forward, if you would, and give a introduction to the council. Val is the individual I contracted with to provide management services for the Office of Planning and Economic Development, and she's also the president of the Local First, and I think the chair of the Regional Planning Commission.
Correct, yes.
So anything else you'd like to cover?
No, just that I'm really excited for the opportunity to, to get to work with the city, and I'm looking forward to hearing any of your comments, anything you'd like to offer to us as we're digging in. I, I was just sitting there thinking, this is only my second day. I mean, there's been a lot of information, and I felt like I knew a lot walking in, but there's still a lot more that needs to be done, and a lot that we are accomplishing. So we're, we're trying to raise the profile for economic development and make it the good news department. That's what I feel like we need to be, is a good news department. And just being able to report to you every month, something really exciting that's going on, so I'm looking forward to it.
Very good. Alderman Turner?
Congratulations, and I'm glad you're, I know that, that you're taking a load off of the mayor and Bonnie, they were doing like three different jobs, in addition to their three jobs that they already have. I just have one concern. I, I was listening to the radio, and you had a commercial on, is, is that a conflict?
I just presented that to Corporation Council, and yes, we were just addressing that.
Okay, great.
Yeah, 'cause it had been looming, and it was like one of those things that I said, oh, no.
It just appeared, it appeared to be a conflict.
Right, correct.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Want to comment on that now, or later?
Yes, we're going to give guidance on the issue, potential conflicts or actual conflicts, both with respect to the business, you know, private business side, but also basically the role on the commissions too.
Right.
So that'll be, to be done this week.
Right.
Thank you.
And just, just to clarify, I am on contract though. This, I am not employee of the city, so just to clarify that too. My, my business, which is a musical consulting LLC.
Alderman McMenamin will be happy to, to make any health benefits.
Alderman McMenamin, I've worked on a lot of different projects together, so yes.
Any other questions or discussions? Well, thank you, Val, for your service, we appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Congratulations.
The other item, budget, I don't know if there's anything you want to share with the council right now? Director McCarty, as far as the tentative schedule, or, I know we just started taking a glimpse at it.
We, we actually got started a month early this year, we started in early October, so we are in the process of aggregating all of the budgetary expense requests for the departments. We'll be meeting with the mayor actually tomorrow to go over that, and we'll, once we talk to him and get an idea of what he has in mind, we'll be putting a schedule out probably by the end of the week, or maybe next week, as to when you can expect the budget to be presented to the council and to the public, and start looking at hearing dates.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Alderman McMenamin?
Will you be proposing, the last budget period you proposed for tax enhancements, as they were called at the time, are we anticipating any for this budget session?
Possibly. I mean, it's, we're in dire straits, but, Director McCarty, you want to share any good news, or?
If you want me to say good news, I really can't talk.
You should tell them you're struggling.
From the corporate fund standpoint, I will say that our latest projections and estimates for next year, we're looking at, the latest deficit number from staff was about $11.7 million, which is right up there with the highest level it was at the Great Recession. As I said numerous times to various, I think, media outlets, the difference this time, though, is that the Great Recession, everybody knew, was a temporary economic cycle, whereas what we're facing now appears to be a little more permanent with what we're seeing out there. So it's going to be, it's going to be challenging, I'll say that.
And that kind of leads into the next point. Doug Brown and I testified at the State House with regards to the Small Wireless Facilities Bill attachment, and, you know, one of the points I emphasized is that the state already, you know, put us at a detriment with regards to our budget, with the passage of the sales tax administration fee, and then also the portion of the income tax that we shared in, and that costs us close to $2 million, or maybe over $2 million. And then the small cell bill that's going through actually allows for-profit entities like AT&amp;T, Verizon, and other providers to put their attachments on the utility at kind of the legislation that's being passed by the state, State House, and that's why we went in opposition with that. We're specifically different from other municipalities that we generate and transmit and deliver our own electricity, and so we touted that, but I don't know if Doug Brown, if you want to come up and give a synopsis of that particular legislation? It's my understanding it just passed the House, so we'll hopefully get it tabled or not looked at in the Senate.
Yeah, just, I guess, basically, it's, if you, you probably see some pictures around, that they, they've kind of showed us that, basically on a streetlight or a pole, they basically have the right to basically, almost put them wherever they want. We have little control, there's no zoning reviews, so we have to, you know, basically list, it's a public safety issue for them not to go on our poles. Of course, they can't be there if there's electric lines that are taken that position, but if there's, if there's an open position on the pole, if our lines are low enough, then they can't go there, but they can also request that, basically, it's make ready work where they pay us to replace the poles. So you could have residents, residential neighborhoods with taller poles in them with these cell devices on it, and they're not really showing what they're going to be doing as far as their plans, but imagine that, you know, that these devices could be on every block. So that's the kind of things we're looking at coming our way, which is unfortunate, that they're, they're basically allowed so much control over our infrastructure, which our residents paid for. And it's not going to be lowering anybody's plans, there's not, their monthly bills for their cell phones aren't going to go down for this technology, so it's, it's really more for profit-driven, that's, that's why they're doing that, so. And, you know, we all want the technology, it's going to, it's going to come no matter whether the bill will pass or not, they're still going to move forward with it. The city of Chicago's exempt, and we tried to see if they would exempt the municipal utilities of our size. And of course, our requests were ignored, but...
And we have agreements in place, or attempt to have them in place, so I don't know, if corporalish counsel, you want to add anything to Senate? And the Senate bill is 1451, so if you would contact any senators that you would know, that'd probably be helpful, to ask them to at least postpone it till the January session, and that way gives us more of an opportunity to address our concerns.
The, the only two comments, and just purely on the legal analysis, they do put a, basically a restriction relating to, interestingly, municipalities over a million, basically Chicago, but they did not exempt the counties over a million. All of the major counties, Cook County and Lake and DuPage, all of various counties in the seven-county area are also very vehemently opposed. And then also, the part of the provision is to restrict home rule in a way that is somewhat unusual in the sense that you can exercise home rule as long as it doesn't contradict the bill, which is the, you know, antithesis of what a normal home rule power is. And they've also put a provision in which is very interesting, where, like some of the northern communities have like 10- and 20-year agreements, however, the statute that they've passed actually says that after two years, the, regardless of what the contract says, it can be canceled. So there are several really very serious legal issues with respect to the legislation, so it'll be interesting how soon it gets to... So it'll be interesting how soon it gets to court, because someone's going to end up, you know, trying to challenge some of those provisions. The concern is this may become a pattern with some of the other industries, because if they allow, keep in mind, if they allow them to do it, then what's to let them, you know, other industries to also do the same thing.
Alderman Dowlen and Seymour?
I guess I'll ask Doug this question. Do we know the governor's position on the bill? No, I do not. No. That's a good question, whether maybe he would entertain like a veto of it, and that's an interesting proposition, I guess.
Alderman, senior?
We don't, you can attach talk, is there any... You got ground poles?
Yeah, I would, they, if, if, there's areas where if it's, like if there's underground areas, they basically can come in and erect a pole. They can ask us to do that, and they have like these monopoles that are, look like some kind of a steel shorter structure that may be 10 to 20 feet high.
Yeah, our subdivision has underground electric, but right outside we have the big set tower, so. What would that, what would the ramifications be? They told me on this side of the records.
Well, and in the residential neighborhoods, they'd probably go on light poles. If it's interbounding in the residential neighborhoods, there's no electric lines necessarily overhead. They would go on light poles. Some of the devices are, you know, maybe sort of bigger round. Some of the other ones that they kind of, they daisy chain a few of them together, and they have bigger boxes that are mounted on lower poles, so the neighborhoods would see pretty substantial-sized boxes in them as well.
Does it benefit to it or...
Well, the 5G technology is basically allows for faster downloads. So for, you know, data streaming, for videos, movies, that kind of thing. That's what you're really getting into with this 5G technology.
And ironically, yes, they have a right to erect poles where they want. They are exempt from zoning. So the issue of the size of the poles, I think the maximum size isn't at 45 feet.
I think so, yes.
And the interesting thing is, we found out today that Comcast has now actually come online and opposing it because they're seeing that that potentially could be AT&amp;T providing movies and different things like this, so it's ironic about how things switch around.
The important concept is that utility, we have to provide services to everybody. Well, these service providers can pick and choose. So especially with their, the income areas, the, what they're going to do, what's going to drive where they put them, is the traffic, you know, the phone traffic, their usage. And so that's the great concern. Are you going to be an equal provider of the service throughout all of our community? And we had those early discussions, and it doesn't appear that's the case, so.
Well, and that was one of the points that was quite interesting, just a policy point of view, because they're granting the right to go on public right of ways, but they have not imposed a duty to equally serve, which is the difference between a utility where, like the utilities where you, they have certain rights and monopolies, but they have a duty to serve, you know, provide water, provide electric, do all of these, provide gas. But in this case, they're allowing the right, but they have no obligation to equally serve, provide the same service. So what you'll end up doing is probably hurting rural areas and perhaps, perhaps more poorer areas where they deem it's not appropriate.
The initial rollout that we've seen reflects that, of what they proposed.
And that was a point that Mayor Langfeller, actually in the first map that they were showing the city when they were initially talking to us, was his request to relocate some of the, some of the facilities in order to cover the entire city, just not certain portions of the city.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes, two good questions. You were successful in with the IML last, I guess, spring stop. Is IML still opposing this ability in the...
They're neutral, I believe. And that's because they represent a lot of smaller municipalities, the smaller ones are, I think, for, for the most part, because it's, you know, it covers their costs, but nobody has the expense as a Naperville. You know, they buried their lines as a CWLP through the city of Springfield. We put a lot of infrastructure in place, and so really, they're taking our expenses and saving the for-profit companies money by allowing them to do this, and that's what the real rub is.
We worked with, not necessarily IML, but IMUA and some of the other, what was it? The Northwest Municipal Conference. We worked with some of those to basically try to get the bill to be better. And so there's a lot of technicalities in it that's improved greatly. But they left out the key things. They would not negotiate the rate in the story. They would not even discuss it. So that's, that's really kind of a, you know, they say that everybody's worked together. They didn't, they didn't attempt that.
So with AT&amp;T and AMR suspended negotiations on two parent ones, do this...
Yes.
So it's kind of an endgame. AT&amp;T, essentially, yes.
The AMR one's different. It's not under...
That's a different situation.
Yes.
So just saying, I mean, whatever that amount is, that's fixed. I mean, to get that changed, you're going to have to go back to before the legislature. And the problem there, our expenses are going to continue to go up. You know, the expense of providing that infrastructure's not going down. It's going to go up. But I don't believe there's a incremental increase with regards to inflationary measures, things of that nature in the bill. Alderman, Anna?
What about adjusting the, what about creating a new electric rate? I assume these work off electric. What about creating a new rate for them, and we adjust it accordingly?
That's something we're going to have to look at, because ironically, the bill omits a duty...
Don't talk too much. They might put it in tomorrow, tonight.
I'm saying that we're going to look at that issue very carefully.
And essentially, it's just really to cover our costs that we're exposed to.
Any other discussion on that item? Again, it's Senate Bill 1451, so if you'd contact any senators you know and ask them to at least put it on hold, we'd appreciate it. The two other items, we are having a veterans' reception on Friday, November 10th, from 5 to 7 at American Legion Post 809 at 1800 East Capitol. So we welcome anybody in the public to recognize our veterans in our community, and it's hosted by the city's Veterans Advisory Council. And then lastly, I'd like to introduce Crystal Thomas. She's the new SJR reporter for the city, right? You're covering the city? So we appreciate you being here.
First meeting.
You got a speed plan?
So anything else? Director McCarty?
Mayor, might as well convey this. While you were at the Small Cell Committee today, I was actually at the Capitol as well. The House Bill 4101 has been introduced with the help of the IML to cut in half or reduce the 2% administrative fee on city sales tax collection that was implemented last year to bring it down to 1%. And hopefully, IML and its supporters will have some success in doing that. I encourage anyone who has friends in the legislature to try and support that bill. That will save us $420,000 a year. It goes towards general operations in the corporate fund and also infrastructure.
Thank you very much. Any other new business coming before the City Council? Is there anybody that wishes to address the City Council?
No one has signed up, Mayor.
Anybody else? Very good. Motion for adjournment?
So moved second.
They're moving second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.